What at my Genoa, my Genoa app's been going nuts.
How was your floor?
Mm-hmm.
Adventure.
Okay.
Hello and welcome to the June 16 regular scheduled meeting of the Genoa Township Board of Trustees. With that, I'd like to ask you to stand and join me for the invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for that beautiful day in celebration of all Fathers yesterday. Please fill us with wisdom and guide our steps that we may make wise decisions this evening. May our actions reflect Your love and bring peace to those around us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is the same, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I get a roll call, please?
Hovarder.
Here.
Susie.
Here.
Deaton, here. Spiker.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Reiber.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Okay. With that, at exactly 6:31, I would open the call to the public for anyone that wishes to address the board.
I have Lynn Bondi.
Okay.
Hi, Lynn Bondi, 2922 Weatherly Road. I was here a couple weeks ago in support of Resolution 3 and 4 that you're considering for the Genoa Estates Number One Road Rehabilitation. Just, again, really appreciate all of your support and help with the project, and we're really looking forward to moving it along, so I'm here in support of that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Anyone not signed in wish to address the board? Welcome.
I forgot to sign.
Not a problem.
Thank you for your time. So, my name is Garrett Bondi. I'm at 2922 Weatherly Road, also my spouse Lynn. I'm in here in support of the Genoa Estates Project. This is a beautiful, well-kept neighborhood. Maintaining the roads is key to maintaining the beauty and also making it more attractive to young families. This is a relatively affordable neighborhood, and we have young families in town with kids, in the neighborhood with kids, and we think that that will further along, further bolster the township's tax base and help us with the future. The neighborhoods were resurfaced 30 years ago, and this is a great value for 30 years. I mean, my goodness. So, just gonna ask for, what we're asking for is another 30 years of life for the roads to maintain all these attributes of the neighborhood. So, I thank you very much for your consideration of supporting us with this project, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else wish to speak? And with that, I will close the call to the public at 6:34 PM. Actually, real quick, I forgot to mention to us especially, also if anyone else chooses to speak, try to speak directly into the microphone. Make sure it's closed to you, almost uncomfortably close, unfortunately, to improve the viewing experience for those at home. We've had some feedback that some of us are a little harder to hear than others, so just try to be cognizant that you're kind of close to your mic when you're speaking. And with that, I will entertain motion on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to move the payment of bills to the regular agenda, so I'd move approval of the consent agenda with item number two, the meeting minutes.
Okay.
Can I make a second?
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Along with that, I will go ahead and entertain a motion on the regular agenda.
So, on the regular agenda, we would be adding item number one, payment of bills, and then items three through 13 as printed, and then we can add item number 14, additional payment of bills, and make this items for discussion number 15.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Action item number one is the payment of bills.
Yeah, I moved it to the regular agenda just because I know there's a note here on the paperwork that Janine handed out that she's looking to remove check number 39614 to the Howell Chamber because we're waiting for a new contract from the EDC for board approval.
We also have additional payments that are not on the bill pay due to their due date, and we don't want to incur any late fees or penalties. We're trying to put everything on the agenda for the public to see and the trustees to approve before bills are actually cut and paid, and so this is just some catching up and cleaning up that we need to do, and last-minute bills. People have been giving us three days to pay. So.
So, these that you handed out will be handled under item 14, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And none of these appear, these do not appear to be duplicates without the check number, I'm not sure, but.
Correct.
These are not duplicates of the existing.
These are the bills that they're saying that are due. We got some that are due.
Okay.
619, so.
Did we not do the approval of the meeting?
We just said that, we moved that, we moved this to number 14.
Number two.
We just did.
Janine, do you have another handout? Trustee Robert, I got one.
Yes, we're in there.
Well, I was just gonna pick it off the packet, but that's okay.
Not in the packet.
This isn't in the packet.
Ah, then I'm not gonna pick it off the packet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Is everybody clear on the modifications to the bill payment structure that we have here? We've essentially removed one payment from the bills that appear in the agenda, in the packet. With that, then, I will entertain a motion.
Um, with the removal of check number 39614. Yes.
Second.
Right. Okay. I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Bills are paid. Action item number three is a public hearing on the proposed Genoa Estates Number One Weatherly and Russell Drive Road Rehabilitation Special Assessment Project. Action item number A, I guess we technically already handled that, but if anyone else would like to speak, it's a call to the public to property owners only within that, within the Genoa Estates Number One, if anyone further would like to speak. Your previous comments were noted, so I will close the call to the property owners, and I will now do a call to general public. Anybody from the general public that would like to comment on the Genoa Estates Number One Road Rehabilitation Special Assessment. Okay. Seeing none. I will close that, and I guess that ends the public hearing. Action item number four is a request for approval of Resolution Number Three, approving the project cost estimates, special assessment district, and causing the special assessment role to be prepared for the Genoa Estates Number One Weatherly and Russell Drive Road Rehabilitation Special Assessment Project will appear on the winter tax bills 2025.
Mr. Chair. Just one quick clarification I'd like to make. When I first published the packet last week, I had the dates in the fourth whereas statement mixed up. I did correct those dates and re-uploaded the packet with corrected dates. The ones you're seeing on the screen of June 6th and June 13th for the publication are correct. For any of you that downloaded the packet prior to me making that change, you may have a different set of dates in your packet, and I just wanted to point that out for the good of the order. I also provided copies of the corrected resolution at the table for you this evening.
Everybody clear on that? I believe, Rick, you had made a motion.
Yeah, I moved to approve Resolution Three, approving the project cost estimates, special assessment district, and causing the special assessment role to be prepared for the Genoa State Number One Road Rehabilitation Special Assessment Project for winter taxes 2025.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Sure. Um, Reiber.
Yes.
Hunt.
Yes.
Spiker.
Yes.
Deaton, yes? Susie?
Yes.
Hovarder.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Moving on. Action item number five is a request for the approval of Resolution Number Four, acknowledging the filing of the special assessment role, scheduling the second hearing for July 7, 2025, and directing the issuance of statutory notices for the Genoa Estates Number One Weatherly and Russell Drive Road Rehabilitation Special Assessment Project for the winter tax role Questions or concerns regarding that? With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Four, acknowledging the filing of the special assessment role, scheduling the second hearing for July 7, 2025, and directing the issuance of statutory notices for the Genoa State Number One Road Rehabilitation Special Assessment Project for winter taxes 2025.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? And with that, Clerk Deaton, I will take a roll call, please.
Um, Hunt.
Yes.
Spiker.
Yes.
Deaton, yes? Susie?
Yes.
Hovarder?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes. Reiber?
Yes.
Motion carried. Action item number six is the request for approval of an application for a public display of fireworks permit on West Crooked Lake for Oak Point Country Club on June 28, 2025, as submitted by Chris Runama of Ace Pyro LLC.
I received an application for the fireworks display. It was approved by the fire department. The assistant's name was left off. Mr. Reiber had asked to have that information because they didn't know who the assistant was going to be at the time. I got the information today. His name is Joshua Manovich, or Manich, and no other assistants, so if you, we can add that to the application once, if it is approved, and I also have his address.
Perfect.
So, paperwork will be completed. I know there was some question as to the fire department involvement, and it's strictly operational. They just kind of look at where the launch site is, where the crowd will be in relation, nearby homes, how quickly they can get emergency vehicles in there, and that sort of thing. They don't, most of the rest of it, they're not, it's not really what they're concerned about, so. Better light that up to the clerk.
Should I abstain from any voting or discussion as I'm president of the association there?
I don't think so.
Don't need to, okay.
Yep.
I make a motion, then, to approve application pending the update to the application with the names of the assistants and their address added to the application.
One assistant.
Yeah, with the assistant, yes.
Yep. Okay, I have a motion.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Enjoy the fireworks. Action item number seven is the consideration of a request for approval to reappoint Eric Roush and Greg Rassell to the Planning Commission, and Craig Fonz and Matt Hurley, as the alternate, to the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term ending June 30, 2028, as requested by the township supervisor, yours truly.
Well, I know they're all doing a fantastic job for the township, and I think it's great to keep them on, going on the boards.
As you saw in my memo, I consulted, Rick is our liaison to the ZBA, Bill is our liaison to the Planning Commission. I consulted with them. They were both very supportive of the current membership on the board. We took that into consideration, and we want everybody to keep doing a good job, and of course, we checked to make sure they wanted to keep working, and they did, so.
That helps.
The only thing I have to add is that they would have to be re sworn in for the new term.
Yes. Before the next, before the next meeting, you'll have to come in and see the clerk. So, okay.
Which is tomorrow.
And you'll be there tomorrow, so, yeah.
I make a motion to approve the appointments from Supervisor Spire to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Congratulations, ma'am.
If you stay, I can swear you in tonight. If you end up staying, I could swear you in tonight.
Okay. Action item number eight is the consideration of a request to approve water rate adjustments in response to the City of Brighton's revised fee schedule effective September 1, 2025, as recommended by the Accountants and Utility Director as follows. Number A is to increase the Lake Edgewood North Star Conference Center Drive quarterly water fee to $8.50 per thousand gallons, up from $8.33 per thousand. Increase the Lake Edgewood Other quarterly water fee to $8.14 per thousand gallons, from $7.98. And to hold the applicable Brighton City Water Connection fee at $2,802 per REU, and the sewer connection at $7,198 per REU. I don't have any questions from their, their packet. This is all per Greg. Our utility director is at a conference, so he was not able to attend this evening, otherwise I'm sure he would have.
Yeah, and this is an annual pass-through based on what the city.
In essence, we, MHOG adds a 20 cents per thousand gallon fee for the convenience of billing Brighton water to certain customers, or sewer here, in other case, and so when the City of Brighton raises theirs, or the Brighton water and sewer, then we have to adjust ours accordingly, and that's all that, all that they do.
We looking for individual motions on these, or think we can do them all together?
I think just one motion, since they're subsets of it is fine.
Then I would move to approve the rate adjustments as provided. Okay. A, B, and C.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Action item number nine is a request for approval of the grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy, Eagle, for the former Oak Point Wastewater Treatment Plan PFAS Risk Reduction Investigation Project.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is also something Dr. Greg Tetera would have loved to be here tonight to, to discuss with you, but he is at that conference. So, essentially, we received a grant, we did talk about this, I believe a month ago, from Eagle to help with some of the PFAS monitoring, and so this is grant money to help us pay for that, and in order to move forward with the state of Michigan, we have to approve, the board has to approve the agreement.
Kelly, is this, is this grant renewed every year, every two years?
Uh-uh. One time.
It's a one-time grant.
But the application, can we apply yearly?
It says the end date, end date is June 30, 2027, so this grant fund is good through 2027. I don't know if there's any provisions for this particular grant, if you can reapply in future years or not.
Okay.
But if you can, I guarantee you Greg Tetera will do it.
So, do we have an estimate of what the overall cost would be for that? I know what the grant is, but, but the overall cost to clean that up?
So, this is mostly for testing and investigation. One thing they're gonna do is maybe see if we can go a little deeper and find a new water vein. Now, once that's found, I have to come up with a.
This isn't cleanup, this is just testing.
Yes, this is strictly to do with the wastewater treatment plant from Oak Point that was taken off of line. This doesn't have to do with the entire property in general.
Guess we'll see what the study comes up with.
Yeah. It does say for the past two years, we've spent just under $60,000 annually for sampling sodium and chloride monitoring, and to date, the PFAS has cost Oak Point nearly $150,000. So, we're hoping this will help us identify a clean, a clean source of drinking water that we can utilize to connect these people to that, so that we don't have to continue with all of the monitoring and filtration.
The township, do we, do we provide the reverse osmosis to the residents?
We do.
Very specifically affected homes that showed up with our test wells, we provided a system, and we give them filters.
Okay.
To change, you know, the maintenance of that system.
Okay.
As well. With that, any further questions, concerns? I will entertain a motion on action item number nine.
I'd move to authorize the utility director to sign the grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes, and Energy.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Action item number 10 is the consideration of a request to hire PSI printing signs and designs at a cost not to exceed $5,252.25 to print and mail new voter ID cards to 10,392 voters whose precincts have changed, and this was requested by the township clerk.
Yes, so we have the approval from the state of Michigan. We're going to redistrict and condense our precincts from nine precincts to six, and we are going to mail out voter ID cards to those people who are voters who were affected by the precinct change, and this is a sample of the ballot, I'm sorry, the voter ID card that will be sent out, and because we have to mail out almost over 10,000, you know, 10,392 voters, it's, it's much easier to hire a firm to do that than me printing for days and days and days, so. And we get the bulk postage from them, and they will send it all out. So, all we have to do is download the information to them and email it over, and they will take care of all the rest for us.
Which precincts specifically does it affect? Do you know off the top of your head?
We eliminated, um.
Three of them.
Three precincts total. We eliminated precincts nine, which was part of, so one and nine were together at Clary University. Precinct. part of, so one and nine were together at Clary University, precinct two, six and five were kind of shifted around, so precinct three and four remain, so we also eliminated another voting site, which was a school, I believe that was.
Horning Elementary.
Horning Elementary School, yeah, and with early voting and the absentee ballots, we thought that this was going to be much easier for us to maintain because there were so many people that opted to vote in advance rather than Election Day, and we hire and pay for a lot of workers, and this will bring down the cost.
This will be a significant savings.
So, my concern is I get mailing this to everybody and then they're gonna forget all about it, and they've been voting for years at their one place and they're gonna go back there, are we planning to do a second mailing when we get closer to an election to make sure these folks know again where they're supposed to go?
I do not plan to do a second mailing, they just get their voter ID card in the mail.
We'll do some social media push and stuff before any election, but.
My thought on this is, you know, someone's gonna get a card and they're not gonna notice the little script on the left that says, hey, you gotta go somewhere else to vote, I kind of feel like it should be, like a letter should accompany this, telling the voter, like arrive in an envelope, fold it in a letter, here's your new card, here's why, here's where you gotta go to vote, because like Rick was saying, people are gonna autopilot to where they've always voted for years and years and years, and then they're gonna get to that polling place that's not even open, it's not a polling place anymore, and that little chunk of time they carved out of their life to go do their civic duty is gonna be wasted and they won't know where to go.
Well, we're not the only.
So, that's gonna be, that's gonna hurt the voter and the candidates.
Well, we're not the only township that condenses precincts, and this is standard procedure for notification, people are more than welcome to, you know, call if they have any questions, we will update it on our website, we will do the My Genoa app, and we also have the Facebook page, so I think that this is enough notification for people.
I get what you're saying, I get there's gonna be a significant cost savings, that cost savings could be realized moving forward and not necessarily on the first year, we could take some of that cost savings and apply it to better informing our residents, you know, we committed to better public outreach and helping people understand what's going on, and to just mail them a new card, I might look at the card and just think, oh, they sent me a new one, because I've had mine for a long time.
It's pretty bold on there.
I do think that shows up pretty good.
Is that gonna be included, so the new voter ID card is the cutaway section, but what we're looking at on the screen as a sample, that declaration to the left is included in what they're gonna open in the mail?
Yep, that is exactly what they're saying.
It's not gonna open it, it's a postcard.
That's the exact postcard that we're gonna send out, we have the ability to change the verbiage a little bit, it's a $250 fee to do that, but that's exactly what they're gonna get, the postage is at the top, and on the back is just some information on the standard card right there, there you go, and they can sign the back of the voter card.
We're also missing an opportunity to tell the people that aren't watching this meeting right now about the significant cost savings, that, you know, we can include that in the letter, telling them why this happened, not only letting them know where they gotta go, but why they gotta go do it, I think we're missing a couple opportunities by only doing it on a postcard.
Well, the postage for postcards is $3,974, if we go to standard mail plus envelopes, the postage, I mean, we're talking probably adding another $3,000, it's gonna double, it's gonna be like almost $7,000.
Did you check on the cost?
I'm sorry?
Did you check on both options?
It will be, and I appreciate the wanting to do, make that effort, but as somebody who mails something out of here often, people don't read this stuff, you can spend hours and hours and hours on this stuff, and, you know, when they come in to me with the tax bill, all that stuff we worked up and worked so hard on is still stuck in that envelope and they don't even take it out. I, the intent is good, I don't know that it's worth the expense.
Are we putting something in the tax bill with it as well?
Not regarding voting, no, we're putting, it's coming up later.
Yeah, we have a notice, kind of a double whammy.
Oh, so Janine, I missed, I'll just make the assumption, because I know you're into voter integrity and secure elections and all this kind of stuff, so the targeted audience, the people that will get this mail, or we've verified, these are legally registered voters in Genoa Township.
Absolutely, they're on our voter rolls through the State of Michigan, when you go to Secretary of State's office and you take your ID in there to move or anything, you sign and they verify and they send us an email, if somebody comes in and says, I'm new to the area, and they have a photo ID, we can also register them to vote as well. So, we, these are registered Genoa Township residents, we shifted the lines, I wish I would have brought up, I wasn't prepared to show the precinct changes.
The original.
Just the cost for the mailing, but this is, you know, this is not something new, they did this same thing, I think about five years ago, there was 12 precincts that they condensed to nine, this is the same notification as we had, which is why there's the sample ballot we had from a few years ago when they condensed from 12, so now we went from 12 to nine, and now we're going to six, so.
Not to put you on the spot, but either Robin or Kelly, do you remember any appreciable resident complaints when we went from the 12 to the nine using this?
I do not.
System, okay.
Nor do I.
Okay, and, you know, I think we're definitely going to have an improved social media outreach regarding it, it is a, it is a cost benefit analysis for sure, there's no two ways about it.
But we don't even know what the alternative would cost.
Over double, it's 72, I should know the first-class postage rate, I believe it's 72 cents, I do a lot of e-bill. I like free. I believe it's 72 cents, whereas this is, yeah, 36.8? Yes. And the other thing is the added cost of an envelope, they're not quite as cheap as they were one time as well, it would be a significant increase in cost, I will not lie, that it would probably be very effective, though I'm real happy to see the important notice, that is pretty tough to miss, and sometimes people don't open a letter as much as we would like them to, although hopefully they open everything from Genoa Township.
I think they would be more apt to open a letter than a postcard, I remember during our campaign, how many postcards we see, and they're just like, boop, or if you get a letter from the township, you're like, oh no.
It's not a postcard, that's their voter registration card, that's what they have to bring in to vote.
We know this, I don't know that they're gonna see a postcard, right?
It might be treated differently, because it's not an election year with.
That does happen.
All the other crap that's going on.
I would hope so, but I don't know.
I do absolutely see the point.
I thought the same thing, Todd, but, you know, after hearing that from Robin's years of experience, that people just toss it or don't open it, and then both Robin and Kelly saying that they, there was literally no confusion or very little confusion when we went from 12 to nine, and it is, it is, I see important notice, you can probably edit that text to say whatever you want to, I assume, important notice, location change or something.
That's right there.
What it says on there, the only thing I will, I can add at the bottom, it says clerk's name and city clerk, it would say Genoa Township, but I could add additional verbiage, but it's gonna be an additional fee, I don't, I don't feel like there's anything wrong with what they have, this is the standard Michigan State approved voter registration card.
I'm afraid if you add more, the print just gets smaller and muddies the water and you lose. I like that it says important notice.
Yes.
I do, that's pretty noticeable.
And the voter card, when you get that in the mail, it looks official.
Right. And it's not at a time right now where people are campaigning and you're getting a lot of campaign mail, so I think this is the perfect time to do this.
On a bright side, you know, we might have a election coming up that'll be a little bit of a practice run, that's not quite as critical as a gubernatorial or, of course, a presidential election in terms of participation, what you're gonna see, they're all important, but.
It's a house, that's pretty important.
Some are well, yeah, some are more, the participation is greater in some elections than others, unfortunately, I would prefer that it was not that way, but that is how it is.
If they wanna vote, they'll look into it anyway, whatever's going on, and seems like they would pursue this, where's my new place, right?
Yep, and we are eliminating one location, so.
We could put a sign at that location.
There's only one location that will be null and void, the rest, yeah.
There you go.
And I can tell.
If you're here to vote, go here.
In the last general election, only 30% of voters actually showed up at the polls, which is why we are doing this, over 50% showed up to early voting and did absentee ballots. So, they would come here for early voting and absentee ballots would get in the mail, so I don't think it's gonna be as troublesome as you think, there might be a few unfortunate circumstances, but I think that we'll be able to have enough notice that people will know that there's a big change.
I just don't wanna do anything to harm any of the candidates or the voters.
I understand.
Agreed, agreed. The nice thing is, you know, the clerks are, the local clerks are very active, and so I know that Janine has met with and discussed this with many other clerks in the area, and I think they share their ideas pretty well, and the other thing is, I really do think, whether I support it or not, the early in-person voting is probably going to be even a higher percentage moving forward, where people come here to vote.
People are more aware.
Ahead of time, ahead of the day of election, I mean, it wasn't even, I mean, it was very well-publicized, those of us who were involved, but for many, I actually came across people that didn't know it was an option, and I think it's gonna grow as more people know.
They have a lot more flexibility in number of days as opposed to one specific day in certain times, yeah, well, I agree with everything that's going on with it, I think it's a wonderful change, my concern was, as we get closer to election, are people gonna forget where they went, you know, type thing.
Well, signs, if we decided to do the sign option, those are nominal, we can do that, if we had to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's easy. No, it looks good.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion on action item number 10.
I'll move to allow the clerk to hire PSI Printing Signs and Designs to print and mail new voter ID cards to 10,392 voters whose precincts have changed.
I'll second it.
And let's add, add a cost not to exceed $5,252.25.
Okay.
Just to be.
Not to exceed, $5,252.25.
Okay, I have a motion.
And discussion, just in case voter numbers increase or something, should we bump that up to maybe 5,500, just to give a cush for Janine?
Yeah, so we have every day, we have a qualified voter roll, we get new people that move in and out of the township all the time, so I would agree with the, with Robin to increase that number, and I'm gonna keep it obviously as low as possible, but.
Keep it proportional to the voter roll count, or just take out the number, or just say new voter ID cards to voters whose precinct changed.
That's what I said originally.
Okay, that is, yep.
I second what Rick said then.
Absolutely.
So is Candy.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion?
So, we're taking the dollar amount off of the motion?
We will, yeah, we will remove the dollar amount, Patty, the up to, or not to exceed, I'm sorry.
Okay. You have a motion, you have a second.
Okay, yeah, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Noted, motion has carried. Moving on, action item number 11 is the consideration of a request for approval to continue to retain Mike Watza and his new firm, Bloom Sluggett PC, regarding cable video, Metro Act, and General Telecommunications Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so we, I've been working directly with Mike Watza for two years, he has helped the township and really been instrumental in negotiating our renewal with Comcast, our renewal with Charter, when WOW came into the township, he was instrumental in helping with that, he's also been helping with Metro Act permits, he is a specialist attorney for telecommunications issues, I did include in your packet a copy of his biography and curriculum vitae, he is, he is an outstanding attorney, he's expensive, but I think his counsel is well worth the rates, and he's just changing firms, and I wanted the board the opportunity to approve the retainer with the new firm.
So, would you have included this much detail about him if we had all known about him beforehand?
No.
Okay, that's what I thought this was, overkill to.
Wow, I know the guy, what size underwear he wears, please.
He's very impressive though, and I just feel like if I had that type of a background and a curriculum vitae, whatever that is, I would want to share it, so.
And this is, of course, just retaining for special counsel if needed, as needed in the future, so, much like we did with our land use specialist, this will be our telecommunications person.
Yeah, I go years without needing his service, it seems to be in the last few years, we've had a few of these cable franchise agreements come up for renewal, so we've used him a little more these last few years than we had in the few years beforehand, but it's a good resource to have available if I need legal counsel related to those issues.
They don't make any of those agreements easy to read.
Yes.
They get paid by the word.
I think so.
Okay, and with that, I would entertain a motion on action item number 11.
I'd move approval to continue to retain Mike Watza and his new firm, Bloom Sluggett PC.
I have a motion.
I have a second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion carried. Action item number 12 is the consideration of a request for approval to renew the athletic field lease with Howell Area Parks and Recreation for a five-year term expiring on December 31st, 2029.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair, I've been working on this for the last few months, we have enjoyed a wonderful relationship with HAPRA on the programming of the athletic fields at the Township Hall, as you know, we don't have our own Parks and Rec department, so we rely on our community partners to program and use the fields, this agreement has been very successful, but with the popularity of our facilities here, especially with the addition of the Survivor Park, we started to notice a few issues as it related to HAPRA scheduling of events, maybe at the same time the Township Hall was having an event, or related to some other event happening, so you will see a marked-up version of the agreement in your packet this evening, most of these changes are just trying to identify and eliminate any conflicts associated with parking here at the Township Hall, and then also clean up related to large events, so this past weekend, they had a large event here, they made sure that they had extra restroom facilities, extra trashcans, paid a little extra attention to the pavilion restrooms, so that they're covering for the events that they're having here at the Township Hall, this would be a five-year agreement if approved by the board.
Any input, Candy?
He just made a statement that it's being, it's harder for him to run it out.
He just made a statement that it's being, it's harder for him to rent it out now because of the parking. There just isn't enough parking, but it didn't matter to him this weekend, right?
Yeah.
And for a dollar, you can't really, it's a pretty good deal.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they're gonna be limited on the types of events and when they can have events here. The biggest issue came in with a lot of the high schools that use the fields. We have a lot of private schools that use the fields. And school gets out at three fifty, they like to have practice here at four o'clock or a game at four o'clock. While we maybe have a board meeting or a contentious planning commission meeting, right? Where we need the parking for our business. So we've, we've had to limit them a little bit on when they can schedule things and how they can schedule things. But I think with these provisions, we'll be able to continue to coexist. It may not be as flexible as, as it used to be, but we have to protect our ability to use this property for our taxpayers.
Was the last, the last contract was also for five years?
That's correct.
So are we between lease agreements right now?
We are. Yeah, the, the current, the contract expired in December. So we've been just kind of operating on a holdover provision as we continue to work through the details. We are proposing to remove the holdover provision from the next round of the agreement, but I expect we'll be on top of the ball and make sure that when that, before that expires, we'll renegotiate.
Some kind of change happened in November or something and they lost track of what was going on.
Okay.
Candy, your comments were, everything seemed okay to you?
Um, yeah, that, that was a statement that he made though, that it's getting harder for them to lease it out because of the parking issue. I just, it seems like there's so much parking up there, I'm surprised it's not enough, but I don't know. I don't know. No, I thi, I think that they, they like the ability to use it, 'cause they can't, they can't do everything over there behind the Asiola Building. And, you know, Howell Public Schools, they're pretty active too. So they, they need it, I think they need it.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, that was about all he said, really.
Yeah.
You know, and like you said, we need the building too.
Yeah. Yeah, they have looked through this, there are some parts of it, you know, they, some of the stuff I put in about the penalties, there's a, there's a requirement that there's a fine associated with the penalty. I know Howell Parks and Rec doesn't love that language because it's going to be difficult to administer, but I really felt like there needed to be some teeth in this because we don't want to run into a situation where it's the tenant that's, you know, not following the rules. So I want HAPRA to be able to tell the tenant, hey, there's a fee if you violate this. And so just, I, I hope we'll never need it, but I wanted to have that in there just in case.
That are safe.
Rules gotta have teeth are their suggestion.
Exactly.
Then Kelly's markups were pretty, pretty significant and spot on from experience.
It has to be on the road or in the parking lot.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion on action item number twelve.
I make a motion to go ahead and approve the renewal of the lease for five years.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Action on item number thirteen is the consideration of a request for approval of a proposal from Three and Three Construction LLC to paint the employee and pavilion restrooms at a cost not to exceed one thousand and fifty dollars from the general fund repairs and maintenance line item one zero one, two six five, nine three four, zero six zero.
As you guys know, I've been trying to, or we've been working hard to spruce up a couple items at the township here, especially the pavilion bathrooms, they get used quite a bit. We did the epoxy flooring and really thoroughly cleaned the stainless steel sink and toilet. And now I think the final phase would do painting. And our employee bathrooms could use a little sprucing up as well. We have some beautiful mint green paint in there that, that's pretty dented up and beat up. And I think that just a little freshening up would go a long way, make it look a little bit nicer in here.
Agreed.
Do we know when the last, were they painted recently or has it been a long time?
I think that this is the original paint in the whole entire township.
It definitely screams it's from the nineties.
The bathrooms, the employee bathrooms.
Fifteen years.
It's been a long time. Okay, they're not the original, but.
I worked with Amy to pick out colors and I think we're gonna go something a little bit more neutral and make it look a little bit more modern and nicer, so.
They've taken some abuse over the years as well. It is a commercial building, the end of the day.
You're talking about the ex, the pavilion.
Both, actually, but yes.
Yeah, and we have some, you know, there's some rust lines from the toilets that are on the walls. And we just make it look a little bit cleaner and nicer in there as well, so.
Sadly, more people probably see the inside of those restroom facilities than see the inside of our hall here. So we need to put our best foot forward both places.
That seems like a very reasonable price.
The price is excellent.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty dollars including paint for each restroom, I think is a phenomenal deal.
When are they looking to do this?
As soon as we get approval. And I was going to have him only close down one pavilion and one employee restroom at a time and have it, have it done over a two-day period, hopefully.
Good.
They're small, they're half baths.
Right.
Okay. I would entertain a motion on action item number thirteen.
I'd move approval to hire Three and Three Construction LLC, paint the employee and pavilion restrooms at a cost not to exceed one thousand fifty dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify.
Sorry.
No problem.
Discussion, just want to make sure, we said not to exceed one thousand fifty dollars. And then you wanted him to do this on separate days to start with, right? You wanted two times, so he's got this little thing down here, if we separate days, I'm gonna ding you for fifty bucks.
But he did tell me in a separate email that he would, he would not do that. Whatever was more convenient for us, I did ask him about that.
All right, thank you, sorry.
Yep. Good catch, I should have pointed that out. Okay, now back to seeing none. I would ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Onto dis, actually, I take that back. We have action item number fourteen, I didn't note my agenda. And this is in regards to some special bills that will, we have an extra week between meetings, about two to three times a year. We only have two meetings a month, and so when there's a fifth Monday, we skip a meeting. That's created a situation where there's a few bills that are going to come due before our next meeting. So the clerk is adding these now so that we may pay them.
So these are not on the, the board packet. These are bills that came out in between the board packet being done last Wednesday and tonight. And a lot of them are mostly the DPW. And we have a few at the township. I also was able to add, or we have to get approval for the Pine Creek Road Improvement Bond Payment and removal of check number three nine six one four for the Howell Chamber of Commerce for the new contract.
Which we did that in the previous motion.
I did void that check, so yes.
And just for clarification, these items will appear in your next packet on, on seven one.
As paid, yes.
Excuse me, seven seven. But they will show up as though they were paid. We're just approving them ahead of time.
We've got to work on coordinating due dates. Like some of them are only giving us, you know, three days to pay or a week to pay. And it's kind of unrealistic at the township when you need to have board approval. But we're working, gonna work hard on trying to coordinate, getting everything scheduled and built.
Okay. Does anyone have any additional questions on what we're covering with action item number fourteen? The secondary payment of bills. With that, I will entertain a motion on action item number fourteen.
I'll move to approve the payment of these additional bills for the clerk to send payment as soon as possible.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. And now on to discussion items. Discussion item number fifteen is a discussion regarding board rules of procedure as requested by trustee Ryber.
Thank you, and thank you, Kelly, for answering my questions. I had, with some other trustees here, attended a master citizen planner course in April. And they had mentioned, made reference to a set of bylaws as a reference document to possibly make some decisions and approve her. And I had called and asked Kelly, do we have bylaws here for the county, or the township of Genoa? And she said, I don't believe that they've ever been penned up. However, we do have this other document, which is the rules and procedures for Genoa Township. It's, it's an old document from nineteen ninety-five. And Kelly was good enough to print off the hard copy here for everybody on the board to take a look at. I just wanted to make sure that the rest of the board, you know, was aware that, that this is there. It was floating around in the background. It's, it's an old document, you can see that there's some markups on there. And there, there are a couple of, you know, it, there are a couple of things that have been redlined that need to be deleted, that have been taken up by other different procedures or policies. So the reason, I just, I just wanted to have the board a chance to take a look at this and make sure that they review it. And if there are any other questions or suggestions for policies, let, let alone some of the things that, you know, are redlined here, that I, I think that we should update this at least to update the policy to get rid of the redlines. We're gonna update the meeting time.
I think we can eliminate some other items on here that seem maybe a little dated in today's world as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we bring it for the boards for approval.
So I just wanted the board to have a copy of this, the rest of the board, so that you had the same information. You know, all of us have the same information to take a look at and, you know, just, we don't have to look at anything tonight. Just take it home, read up on it. And then maybe at a future meeting of the board, we can, we can vote to go ahead and make any policy changes to this document.
Submit to Kelly or I, you know, if you have specific changes you would like made. And we will update and, potentially for the next meeting, but for sure by the meeting after that, we'll get something put together for your approval.
Yeah, I did want to point out that in the last paragraph of my memo here, I just said, next regular board meeting. I, I don't, I don't need us to stick to that.
Okay.
That might be a little early.
Yeah, yeah. So anyways, thank you, Kelly, for.
Of course, and actually, if you don't mind, I do sort of want to jump into the discussion because I've had on my board on the wall kind of a list of policies that I wanted to look at. I wanted to ask the board to consider. And as part of a few other things this week, including looking through old policies, I identified some other policies that exist in the township that were adopted a long time ago that practice has sort of migrated away from the way the policy was originally written. Over time, you know, things change, but I'm finding that folks didn't always go back and clean up the policy to reflect what was happening. So I'd like to sort of use this as a launchpad, as an opportunity to clean up and present forward to the board a few other policies that I know, like, for example, Heartland Township has a big book of like their protocol. Hamburg Township has a big book. I don't know that I'm looking to write a book, but I do think there are a few that we could clean up and present back to the board for some additional feedback and directive moving forward. So I just wanted to mention that this, this may be the start of something more than just rules and procedures coming back to you at future meetings.
I think the clerk would like to update the payment policy for, to make sure that everything is.
Yeah, maybe this can be a springboard for, like Kelly said, just a general house cleaning activity.
Good idea. Certainly do.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Excellent. Anything further on action item number fifteen? Okay.
What were the porta potties out here for?
So Howell Parks and Rec did have a rental on the fields on Saturday. It was for Endeavor True Fit. So apparently the True Fit organization rented the fields. They have like a annual competition where all of the members come and compete. So they had a large event here on Saturday.
So that, that wasn't enough for them, but they added more.
So, correct. And we've asked, it's kind of roughed into this policy right now, that if you're gonna have more than two hundred people, you need to supplement what we have. There's one female, one male restroom up there. And that's not enough to support our park patrons plus large events.
Right, got it.
I do have one thing I would like to add. I contacted the Big Red Barrel to find out how successful it was during our spring cleanup. And they collected seventeen pounds of pills and sharps, so.
Excellent.
Those are not going in our landfill.
Good. They're not getting the fish out.
And they're safely disposed of.
Safely disposed of, yes.
How does that compare to some of their other drives, you know?
That I don't know, I didn't ask. I was very proud of the seventeen because we went from basically nothing before to seventeen. And they said that they would be happy to plan a future event this year, later this year in the fall, if we have something. And.
We'll look to coordinate something with our master planning workshops to kind of have a two-for-one deal for people to come and be involved and do a good thing. Do we have any member updates from our various board members on other boards that have met since our last meeting?
Regarding Breitner Fire Authority, we, besides like minutial budget stuff, we approved the purchase of a Kubota UTV and a trailer. And their intent for that is to be able to use it for areas where you might need to get personnel or firefighting equipment into like a remote area where a truck won't fit. Or with our highways being under construction, sometimes you can't fit a whole fire truck down somewhere to fight a fire or to take rescuers or bring a patient back. In the back of this UTV, there's a skid that's gonna go in that's got, it basically turns this UTV into a fire truck. And on the top of it is a platform where you can put a patient, like a litter, so you can transport a patient. They can use it for events, like when Main Street is closed down and if someone has a medical emergency, rather than having a bunch of people carry a litter down and run down the street to go help somebody, they can just drive this thing in and render aid and get somebody out. So. That's, that's it for Breitner Fire Authority. And then for Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, I attended an event last Thursday where we conducted elections for, let me get this pulled up. Basically for the people that oversee, like the, the TAP program and the Planning Assistance Program, elected leadership for, for that for the next year. And I attended a legislative roundtable where I asked a couple of questions that nobody at the, the roundtable, no one in SEMCOG leadership had an answer for, but it was regarding elections and election equipment that the state mandated, that we're curious about what type of funding they might have to offer with regard to their mandate. So I'm still waiting on an answer from them for. So I'm still waiting on an answer from them for that. And then supervisor, you know.
This guy.
Yeah, this guy, Kevin. He and I were interviewed by MTA this week, Michigan Townships Association regarding our new My Genoa app. They seemed very interested in how the whole process worked from concept to implementation and the successes we've had with it so far. They are going to publish an article in their magazine about it. So we're still waiting on feedback from them regarding our interview.
Apparently there are a number of townships elsewhere in Michigan that are interested in potentially following our lead, so to speak, and getting an app for themselves to communicate to their, their residents. I've been pleasantly surprised with it. I, I absolutely have to admit, this, the person that interviewed us was, was surprised our numbers were that strong that early. So kind of a testament to how much we're trying to really get things out there so that our residents know what's going on. So we will update you. I'm sure we'll be able to link the article for our residents to read if they prefer on our, on our socials whenever that finally comes out. That's all I got. Nothing new, PC, ZBA?
Nothing, nothing right now. Our meeting is tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
Just a couple of things on the agenda tomorrow, not anything earth shattering, but.
We'll look forward to the update next time. Anything good going on over at Happer Candy?
We haven't met since I was here.
Okay. Excellent.
I know they're working on their, they're publicizing the runs quite a bit, trying to get people to sign up because they have three, the Melon Fest and then one at Halloween.
Okay.
And another one. So if you do all three, then you get a better deal, you know, if you're a runner, that kind of thing.
See if we can help them out with that.
Yeah, I know they want people to come help at the events. That's what I think. They're good, they're busy. A lot of people, a lot of kids in the soccer. They're already talking about fall and, and that kind of thing. He's trying to find other places to put pickleball courts. Did he contact you? What did you say?
Uh, I just, in, in conversations among the supervisors, there's been much discussion about the beloved sport of pickleball.
I know. Yeah, Marion's putting some in outside, not lit, not currently lit though, but they are going to build a pavilion they thought next year near it. And so they're trying to find more avenues for people to play outdoors. But you know, the, it's not as long of a season for sure, you know, because of the weather, it gets cold or it's raining, you know, you can always count it inside. And they said that there's, I think there's some courts in the outlet mall.
What, where?
Somebody rented some space in there and put pickleball courts over there.
Really?
Mm-hmm. So that's an option too?
There is the one, the private club by Home Depot as well?
Yes. Yep, there's that, yep. That's, that's busy.
Legacy Center, well, that's a little ways out. I think they're doing something too.
They just built some new outdoor courts.
At Legacy?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, any further board comments?
We have flyer that Kelly worked on that we discussed, I think at the last board meeting. Tax bills are going out July 1st, so it's an opportunity to throw something in the envelope and hopefully they actually read it. Instead of at September 14th, they're going to stand there and pull out that bill to pay it and this is going to fall out, so.
I'm not sure we talked about that at the board, if it was internally.
Was it just us?
But yeah, we thought it's an opportunity. We're doing a mailing to all of the, you know, citizens of the township. So we put together just this one-page insert to sort of try to engage people on the master plan and then also promote and pursue more interest in the app. So this is what we put together and we're hoping to put it in the tax bill. So when you get your tax bill, you will also get this and just more opportunities to try and engage people.
Can we put a line or two in there about, hey, pay attention, you might get a new voter registration card?
I was thinking of the, when we were doing the discussion.
If we're already saying something, we should maybe.
Originally I was going to do this two-sided with the master plan on one side and the app on the other, but then we thought, eh, we'll probably be lucky if we get people to look at one side, but we could definitely do the backside with a little article about the voter stuff.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah.
Maybe the new addresses of the new places and we could put the map on there.
I didn't want to print color just to save money, so I think the map.
Yeah, but you could still put what she gave you.
We doing this in-house with our snazzy new printers?
Yeah.
We are.
You could still just do this.
Yeah, but with, if it's not in color, I don't think, I think it'll create confusion.
If we're just adding something about, you know, if you get a new card, it's because the precinct changed and something short and simple, I would really prefer to downsize one of these and keep it on one side.
Keep it on the front.
Agreed.
And just for the master plan update, that actually arose out of resident feedback asking if we were going to be able to or plan to do a full, full-scale mailing and the cost of that is quite significant. So we were hoping to avoid that significant cost, but we did appreciate the concept. And then this opportunity came along and so we seized it.
Will this add anything to the cost of the mailing yourself?
No. Dates to give, yeah.
So I will bring something up that came from the, the planning commission. It wasn't part of the regular meeting, but there, there are proposed survey questions related to the master plan here. And, and as far as I know, you know, Kelly and Amy have put out the survey questionnaires to commission members, planning commission members. I don't know who else has.
This group.
Okay. All right. Maybe I just got it once because I'm on that. But I, I just wanted to, just as a matter of procedure, if, if I had a resident come up and say, hey, what are the questions going to be on the survey or can I get this question on the survey? I understand, at least my interpretation was, let's get the survey vetted by the different commissions and boards first. And then it was going to go out to the public and it was going to be posted on the website. And I, I don't know if we're not missing opportunity right now to glean some input right away, you know, let, let some of the people that have attended the, you know, town halls or something like that have input to create questions for the survey.
I was kind of hoping the questions were going to be set prior to this going out so that when they scan this QR code, they can go to the survey.
So the QR card will take them to the website. We did send it out. We got feedback from some of the planning commission members, a couple of board members. So now we're going to take those comments that we got back, refine them. I presume this group's going to want another look at it. The planning commission may want another look at it. I know the planning commission also asked for the ZBA to be given an opportunity to comment on it. So we're definitely adding more layers and timing to.
So this definitely won't be ready by July 1st.
It will not.
Okay.
That would be fantastic, but we, we want to get the questions right.
I get it.
So that we get the, the actual input that we can really use to strengthen our arguments for the decisions that are made, so.
And yes, to get to, to your point trustee, if, if you come across someone in the community that's like, I really want to know what people think about this, have them get in touch with us and we can compile that and let the planning commission and the board.
Or they can tell you and you can relay it to us.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted to get clarification on that.
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Thank you all for coming. Meeting closed as of 7:44.
You'd be a lot of conversation.